City council work session on the new zoning codes. And today is June 4th, 2024. Remind me, I gotta call my dad since birthday.
Oh, happy birthday.
I just looked up there and went, oh, somebody remind me of that. Wow. This is a probably not as a detailed meeting as we've had in our marathon last three sessions. And we're going to cover some ground on where we're at, where we're going. And also, most importantly, some of the items that have been addressed from council. And first of all, I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for your participation in this lengthy, but very important process. We have met, we have re-met, we have held numerous public meetings, we have engaged. And we have come to this point with a lot of feedback from council. And you know, as our city charter state, zoning is one of the most important things that we handle as a council. And you have given it 100% of your attention, and I appreciate it very much. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over. Dan, you had a few words you want to start off with?
First again, thank you everyone for meeting today and spending some more time to talk about the draft zoning ordinance. I wanted to just kick off by saying it's been about two years, I think, since we originally started working on, probably even longer than that, an evaluation of the code and then development of a draft. And I want you to be, I want to say that it's been transparent and inclusive from the beginning. We had a lot of public meetings, we've met with a lot of stakeholders, we've met with neighborhoods, we've met with city departments. And we continue to have a very transparent and inclusive process as we go forward over the coming year or more. I did want to just say again, thank you to the council for your trust and staff. But also to just recognize Brian Schultz who's here and his staff who have been, who have been involved. Our zoning staff manages zoning applications and questions and things like that every day. So his staff, of course, Karen Rennick has been sort of the champion in our department. And Karen has been just very, very helpful in all of her work. And of course, Chris Anderson. And so together, we've had a great team. And again, I think it's gone very well, and we want to just keep the momentum going. Because as after we adopt this, as you know, we will then start working on mapping. And at the same time, we will be finishing up Plan Chattanooga. And we can talk about what we might do with zoning in the future years. But again, it's just a process and we want to keep it moving. And again, thank you for all your patience.
Thank you, Dan. Who's next?
I'll go.
All right, Chris, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you Chairman. And I will say, in my role, no, I don't have staff in the mayor's office, I don't have any support staff. It's whatever I'm working on, I work with the staff in different departments. And without question, working with the planning staff is the best pleasure you can imagine to work on legislation with. Karen, Brian, and Darian, and Emily, and Dan are just a pleasure to work with. They're professional, and they've done a phenomenal job over these last three years. So that has led us to where we are today. Status.
Aren't we streaming on YouTube live right now?
We are streaming. Madam Chair.
So so far, we've had a planning commission work session, and there is another one three weeks from yesterday on June 24th, with the planning commission. The planning commission reviewed and recommended approval of a document last fall that we then brought to this council. Since then, we've held three public meetings, and they were held at different geographic locations around the city to be convenient for different parts of town. We've had three stakeholder meetings. This has been very community driven, where we've invited people in, people such as architects and engineers who have to work with this code. And we've had them tell us what works and what doesn't work, because you're the ones actually designing projects. And we don't want to be a hindrance to building things like affordable housing or commercial development. We want to help with that. It's why we spent all this time for three years, right? We have a problem, we're trying to solve it. We've done four city council work sessions, today is the fourth, and I believe the final one. We've addressed and reviewed over 400 comments and questions. Every Friday for many weeks now, we have spent two to three hours, myself and the team I just mentioned, we've been meeting in the DRC every Friday, going through the comments made one at a time for a long time now. So we have answered every comment that we've received. And a lot of them have led to changes in the document that's before you. And some of them have just been clarification questions, but we've gone through everything. We've taken everyone's comments seriously, no matter who they are. You can see the responses in the table, and we have created a red line draft document that's before you today. And you'll have that in an email before you leave the building today, unless you're leaving early. And it's a big document, so you've got one you can write on there. Let's talk about changes in the zones. What have we changed? We have been very responsive to council individual requests. So we have retained a 7,500 square foot minimum lot for an overlay that encompasses Lookout Valley and Mountain Creek. This is an area that is challenged when it comes to service delivery and also topography and geography. It does sit between two mountains, so density is not as big a priority in those areas due to all of the things I just mentioned. So RN1-7.5 is what that will be. We created a 3,000 square foot minimum lot size for single unit only, and that'll be RN1-3. That will not be equivalency mapped to anything. It will be by request and on demand for an area that desires it. Nothing will be equivalency mapped to that one. We combined two of the RN zones. There wasn't a whole lot of difference in RN2 and RN2T, so we just added townhomes to RN2.
Yeah, that was an early on discussion. Chris, I'll hold you real quick, Councilman?
So if something is, if it gets mapped RN5, and somebody wants a 3,000 square foot lot, or two 3,000 square foot lots, does that constitute a rezone?
Yes.
And it comes before council to determine?
Yes, sir. So a few more things that we did. We cleaned up the Boza section a lot. There's often confusion about what Boza can do and what they can't do. We cleaned that up. We made some changes to small family cemeteries. That was something that came out of either the second or third work session in this room. Irregular lot lines, that's something that you don't see a whole lot, that's why it's called irregular. But we have added some graphics for dealing with that. The group homes distinction is something that we've worked with Mr. Noblet's office on for a while now, who was working with the US Department of Justice. And we believe that we have a defensible definition there that meets all federal requirements.
We believe so.
We believe so. It's our position.
Yes.
We have the definitions we need for livestock and anything related to horses. And we cleaned up the PUD approval standards. Remember that PUDs will no longer just be a tool for density, which is what they've been for years. They will actually be planned developments that you get to look at and see, and see if it meets the needs of the neighborhood before it's approved. We've talked about food trucks and ensuring their appropriate location. And Councilman and Chairman Henderson, we removed the requirement that the garage cannot project beyond the building sideline. Yes, ma'am.
No, ma'am, we're in a very informal set, please.
The group homes.
Yes.
Are we gonna discuss that further or just quickly?
If you wish, yes.
Well, that has become an important issue.
Yes.
At least in my area. What is the definition?
Well, at least under state law, any type of home for someone that may have some sort of, I guess, disability under state law, and that would include mental disabilities in that regard. If it is a person who is coming back recuperating from convictions, I believe, might potentially be in that area. As long as there are eight or less folks in the area and three caregivers, then they are entitled to be there for a nonprofit under Tennessee law by right. If it is something where there is a commercial basis on there, then they have to obtain a special exceptions permit. And I believe the changes to the Board of Zoning Appeals still in that regard here that would have to be done and not by the city council. Now, if it's larger than eight or less, then that body would be something a little bit different in that regard. And would they come to the council?
It goes to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special permit.
Yes, so still special permits.
So it's, you're talking about a group home that's a defined group?
Yes.
So we have groups of people living, getting houses and living in the area without any kind of permit. I'm not sure how that's defined.
I believe there is some change.
For profit, I mean, they're, yeah.
Well, there are dwelling unit numbers. Did y'all continue to include those numbers?
It's on the screen.
Those dwelling units here, including a group of two or more living together in a unit, not to exceed four persons with three or few bedrooms. They're trying to do it based upon the size of the structure that people are within.
Well, I think the issue had to do with family, and we don't define family.
We do now, ma'am, and this is the definition that Nashville.
Based on your comment, I think at our first session, which is how do we, can unlimited number of people live in a unit? And so we discussed that, and so there's really no controls. We were hoping the building code. So we, for just the purposes of this chapter for zoning, families defined as individuals, a group of people that are related by blood, marriage, or law, or then a group of people, but they're limited by the size of the dwelling unit. So that's intended to keep, kind of keep, constrain the number of people in a home.
So if you're not related by blood, element three in this definition applies to you. But if you are related by blood, you do not have a limitation on the number of people that can live in the home with you.
That's correct.
I was more concerned with the people not related.
That's number three. So it's one person, people that are related, unlimited number of people that are related. Or if you're not related, then it depends on the number of bedrooms. And that's intending just to make sure you don't have 25 unrelated people living in a two-bedroom house.
One of the things that has come up, and it came up recently, was there were, I think, people that would fall under number three, except they said we're all cousins. That might be debatable. Right, but it was, it was a housing workers thing. We can't determine who's family or who's not, so how does that work? Well, I've got several of them popping up and...
Yeah, if you have a zoning inspector, the zoning inspector could ask for some documentation. I guess that's gonna be an issue here in connection of, are you trying to get information? That might be private information here, but we live in a time where there's gotta be some documentation.
So the issue has been, R1 neighborhoods, current R1 neighborhoods, somebody buys a house and moves in all these workers. And I have three of them now, I think, moves in all these workers. They sleep there at night, and then they're farmed out to whatever the work job is during the day. So I'm not sure what you do with that. They're bussed in, think of farm worker sort of thing, bussed in at the beginning of the season. And then after three months, or the work project, they're bussed out again.
Sure.
During that three months, these workers are staying in the house. What do I say to people in the neighborhood?
That this is a group of individuals that would constitute a family under our definition, if it's not more than the number that would be allowed in the bedrooms of that house.
That they're a family?
Which is four people, let's be clear. It's only four people if there's three bedrooms or less and five people.
Well, the numbers have got to meet what we have here, hopefully for safety purposes here, the individuals themselves not being overwhelmed. You can do things with your own family that might be putting them in a little bit...
Totally unrelated people.
Yes.
So if they say, but we're all related, then we just say, oh, okay. Is that what you're saying?
If this qualifies as our definition, can the onus be placed on them to provide that information?
So they will be asked to provide the information?
And until it is?
Okay, that's what I...
This is in effect. I'm just, it's a question, it's not a statement.
And this language is used in Nashville also? And so we can follow with them and coordinate with our LDO partners on how Nashville enforces it. They probably have quite a bit of experience, would be my guess.
Which is why we took this definition from them from the Nashville code.
Okay. We looked at quite a few, and we felt that this one was kind of addressing our situation, trying to keep a lid on it, but knowing that there are lots of different types of families and living situations.
Yeah, I'm not knocking families or any of this.
We can follow up on that.
When there is an issue. Kim has been working with me on it. When there is an issue, we weren't sure what to do.
I'll follow up with Nashville.
Okay, thank you.
And then the information that Chris is going through, or the questions you all had for us that we had at our last presentation, and then this sheet has a lot more information if you're interested. He's kind of hit the highlights.
Thank you. So self-storage is what is in this packet quite a bit, and Karen has hopefully included different pictures of different types of self-storage. And we did define family as we just discussed for this purpose. We got questions about counting on-street parking towards the parking minimums. We're looking at some affordable housing incentives right now and maybe rolling parking incentives into that. So for now, we're gonna hold off on that. I would remind you that we have, every three months, we're gonna review this for the first year. So we'll still have the opportunity to amend this whenever. Theoretically, this can be amended every Tuesday, so we'll have the ability to.
I appreciate that. I went to a Civic lecture last week, and there was some really interesting data about how much change we have in what our households look like and what our households want. And the fact that 80% of what we're building is for families of four or more. And really, our demographics with our aging population are changing, where we have more like two to one person in a family often. And so we need more small dwellings for people to have more choices. I think about my own parents that are in a large home, and they thought they were gonna move into a Riverton townhouse that was gonna be small, and now Riverton's building mansions instead. You know, like, that's not an option. So I appreciated what they said at Civic about considering iterative change to a zoning code after we make a major rewrite like this, to be open to regular improvement of that code. And I will tell council, one of the things that I also learned was that a law was passed at the state that will go into effect in July, that will allow us to opt-in as a city to build triplexes and quadplexes under the International Residential Code instead of the Commercial Code, which will enable builders to not have to put sprinklers in quads and triplexes, which will make them much more affordable to build. And so we need to opt into that to allow for that, but it will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in builds. So it may not be something that people take on, you know, I don't anticipate in droves we're gonna see quads being built, but when we do, they'll be able to be a more affordable product.
That's true. Sydney is working on that with LDO and the Fire Marshal.
Great, well then, Phil can talk to them, because I'd like us to be ready to see it as a council on maybe the 18th in about two weeks, and then be ready...
Another week, alright, good.
And then be ready to vote on it on July 9th. Because the government, you know, would go into effect on July 1, and so that would be our first Tuesday back. Thank you. And that would give us time to discuss it and get everybody's questions answered if we could get it the 18th of this month. Thank you.
So the last two items on here, we remove, there was a question about personal services establishments, personal services establishments from the CNT and the CN zones. There's already, we were unaware when we talked about it in this meeting, but there's a cap at 3,500 square feet. So we believe that handles the nuisance to the neighborhood issue. Again, that is something that we can come back and change in a few months if it looks like there's an issue with it. But these personal services establishments are kind of designed to be on the outskirts of neighborhoods. They're things that, they're low-impact commercial locations that are small, that meet the needs of the surrounding neighborhood.
This kind of replaces, Chris, our neighborhood commercial.
It sure does.
Which encourages a smaller footprint.
Yes.
And obviously services that cater to neighborhoods, walkability.
Right, it's a lot of businesses that you can walk to, whether it's a coffee shop or a hair salon or whatever it is, but it's small neighborhood businesses.
Tanning bed, VHS rental.
VHS and tanning combo would also qualify.
I think that's worked really well for years now.
This would have been, we have a coffee shop, Lola Beans, on East Brainerd Road, that I had to do C2 with conditions in order to make it work, and it was just not the right tool, which is the whole reason for why this process is where it's at to this day. And then that opened up, obviously, set precedents for the other types and requests for C2 as it comes along. So I think we're on the right track, because I would have loved to have just put that into CNT and let it be what it's supposed to be, instead of having to condition it. Yeah, and it's a great, it's a great little shop. Everyone loves it, not zero complaint from it. It's beautiful, it's, I mean, just, it's perfect.
It meets a neighborhood need, and that's one of the first things that I remember Mayor Kelly saying to me three years ago, is the neighborhood commercial piece was largely missing, and you had to take like a C2 or a C3 in a neighborhood. So now we've got these less intense uses that really are neighborhood commercial, not just commercial that happens to be in a neighborhood.
Yeah, and it's led to other requests that have been quite contentious at times, because, like I said, that precedence has been set. So I think we're, this one we definitely have right.
Maximum building coverage for townhomes. We decided not to change that, because typically a townhome development, unless it's like two, will have a community lot that's not counted as a part of the townhome lot, but there is some kind of community space or open space in pretty much every townhome development. So that wouldn't be calculated in a townhome lot. Typically, the way they're developed is you've got a lot that's maybe, you know, 20 feet plus or minus by, you know, 60 or 70 feet, and that's where the building footprint is. But then there's like a shared drive or a park area or both, that's a different lot, that it's community space that everybody's paying into every month. So it's something that we'd rather wait on just to see if there is a problem with that. We don't anticipate there will be, because it's the way townhomes have been developed, with the open spaces, a separate lot. And then Karen's gonna talk about our external stakeholders that we've been dealing with.
So Chris covered a lot of it. We did get quite a few comments, and we compiled them in this big spreadsheet. And then we tried to respond to them. So there are, all the parking and all the landscaping reference, the parking and landscaping changes, just because a lot of them interact together, so addressing one on its own didn't quite make sense. But we tried to go through, a lot of the comments are, lots of them were very helpful. Either this is confusing, or here's a recommendation to, you know, clarify language, or this is helpful, thank you. I like this tool. So the staff response is intended to be a little bit more informational. You should still look at the zoning ordinance to see what it says. But the intention was if you gave us, gave us a written response or told us something in a discussion that it's on here, and just how we responded to it. And so if, with the idea that we are trying to show that we are being responsive, and a lot of those changes are codified in the zoning code. So the changes we discussed with you, including the new definitions of group home, the new definition of family, are in the zoning ordinance. And then this is where the other edits are coming from. We also had quite a few comments internally, and so from our, from other city staff and subject matter experts. So those are not on here, but we had lots of feedback from our, our city partners. And then the red line draft, so everything is in the red line in front of you. There is, it is kind of hard to reformat the entire thing to be in line with MUNICO formatting and not lose the red line, but the intention hopefully is that everywhere you see a change has been made in the rundown or your sheet more specific to council, you'll see that in the document. We do need a little bit more time now that we've finished changes to just make sure all the references are accurate. And then there's just a few things that we still just need to check on to make sure, like the group homes align with all the changes that Phil thinks are appropriate. So that is kind of where we are to date. We're also, Dan had a good idea about having someone review the development standards. So there's kind of design standards, there are more development standards, and we got quite a bit of feedback, a wide variety of feedback from stakeholders. So Dan has agreed to have kind of an outside subject matter expert just review it to make sure it makes sense for our community, identify where there might be something that's either hard to enforce or may have some sort of unintended consequence. So that might lead to some edits when that's complete.
And when we say design standards for development, I think we're largely talking commercial development?
That's correct, yes. Yes, so it might be where it talks about...
Brainerd overlay?
Yeah, or a percentage of the facade that is, you know, and here's the elements that would go into the facade treatment, or what is, what is acceptable as a facade treatment and what's not. Those are the type of things we're getting more feedback on. Rest is mine.
Here.
Yes.
Can you go back to the stakeholders slide?
Yes.
I don't know, we spent just a minute on this, this is really important. Over 400 comments from the professional field that we heavily relied on was something I know was very, very important. When we talked about this, when we revealed this at Planning Commission in December, I believe, Chris. And it was because there are experts out there looking at this that have to work within this. And there's a lot of items or technical, mechanical things that we're probably not gonna catch on a daily basis or aware of setbacks and different attributes to the building process, engineering process. This, I think, was incredible to respond to or address over 400 comments and to have multiple, multiple meetings with the professional community and get their feedback. And I feel like in my conversations with some of them, they do feel that they were heard, had great input. Are we gonna obviously review this? Yes, and we need to. Matter of fact, this baking in quarterly reviews on anything on the first year should be something we do, we're moving forward for everything. It gives them a level of confidence that we are on top of what, what changes we are making so that we, as things arise, Dr. Burr's district, for example, I have the same concerns you have as well when it comes to issues that we were discussing. This gives us an opportunity, but this was incredible work, and this took a lot of time. This RPA staff, and Chris, I know you were working, this took a lot of time, folks, and I'm very happy. I didn't want to just gloss over that, because this, this is, this is in the trench work. And it really, really made a difference, I think, in where we're at. And I'm really glad that we took the time as a council, and we went through this process, although it'll be a lot longer maybe than some had anticipated when we unveiled this in December. But this has been going on for a couple of years, and this is, I just want to make note of that, make sure that that's highlighted. Thank you. Yes, Madam Chair?
Let me second that. I think you all did a fabulous job and a lot of hard work. I hope we really, really, really do that quarterly review.
We absolutely will.
I mean, I really hope it's on the agenda that Mr. Chair has quarterly meetings where we sit and go over. And we talk a lot about enforcement, but one of the things that we need to talk about is what are the glitches that make enforcement not easy, or what can we do better? And I'd love to hear from the enforcement people about what they're dealing with as unintended consequences or that sort of thing. It's really easy to say, go enforce something, but then we don't have whatever we need to do that. So please, if we, Mr. Chair, if you could make sure that we have those quarterly updates, and that would be wonderful.
Yes, ma'am.
This is probably some of the biggest work we've done in Chattanooga.
I would say this is the biggest piece of legislation since 1961.
I think so. I think so. And it's needed for a long, it's been needed for a long time.
I can take a moment, is there some of the things that we also have underway? Because that was one of the things that we had quite, that you all gave quite a bit of feedback on, was enforcement. So now that we have our red line draft, meeting with LDO to review the zoning ordinance to kind of understand where it came from and do a series of working sessions with them. And then we talked about, once it's active, doing kind of a, a planning in LDO huddle just to make sure that we're working through problems, finding out what needs to be changed with the idea of kind of doing the loop back to the amendment. And then also, just helping make sure that there's some new processes in here that'll be for LDO and just making sure... and just making sure we're helping them get those set up and trying to streamline and take, so they're not having to spend a lot of time on that.
May I ask one more question?
Yes, ma'am.
Clarification. So Chattanooga is growing and changing pretty fast. And we need to be nimble enough to change with it. And I have this long draw. Dan and I are working on a project right now where somebody, he mentioned the Brainerd overlay, is trying to build exactly what we want. But there's this Brainerd overlay thing that says, you know, which is such an anachronism. But we're stuck with it for right now. We're trying to figure out a way, our esteemed legal counsel is trying to figure out a way that we, somebody wants to build a coffee shop. We're like two feet in the way or something. The bottom line is, how nimble do you see us being till this really is a going Jacy?
I think this new ordinance allows us the ability to be nimble in a lot of ways that the current ordinance does not. And the administrative modifications option is something that's crucial because it gives reviewers the ability to make a ten percent reduction on a setback, a height, whatever. These minor changes that can delay housing being built for months while we go back to Planning Commission and then come back here over a foot.
When you see this passing.
Or Boza.
When you see this passing.
Well luckily, you set up the next slide, which is here on the screen.
She was a plant.
Yeah, I was a plant. I was many things.
Finish your transaction later. So today's June fourth, final work session here at council. And then we are going to be asking you to pass a resolution next Tuesday. And that resolution simply says that we, that you've gone through this and reviewed it and you're sending it back to Planning Commission for their review and recommendation. So, because it's already come back from Planning Commission once, that's our mechanism to get it back. And today's meeting will serve as the committee for that resolution on your agenda next week. And it's less than, it's a half-page resolution, it's pretty short. And then we have a Planning Commission work session that I mentioned earlier on June twenty-fourth. It's the DRC, the ground floor, the big conference room one A. And you're, it's not really a conference room, it's theater style. But you're certainly welcome and encouraged to attend if you want to. We expect most of the Planning Commission to be there for that. And that's designed to, if they've got questions, like let's devote a whole afternoon to that and not weigh down the July Planning Commission meeting with just this. So we have that. And then we have, we're going to immediate, well, it's going to the July eighth Planning Commission. And then they will make a recommendation based on that. We're going to bring it back to you on July sixteenth, eight days later. We can meet the public notice requirements. There's no reason to wait a month from a legal or practical standpoint because there, we don't anticipate any changes at Planning Commissioned. It's going to be the document you see in front of you most likely. So that would come back to council on July sixteenth for a first read and July twenty-third for a final read. Those dates are really crucial to make it effective in October. A one-week delay in any of this means that it becomes effective the week of Thanksgiving, which we'd like to avoid. It pushes us back a month into late November. So you see, that's why we've got October, the new zoning ordinance becomes effective. In August, we are not accepting new zoning, rezoning cases for the August Planning Commission meeting. Because August is now going to be this black hole where people would be applying under the current zones. But by the time they got to the end of the process, we'd have a new zoning code. So we're asking people not to apply for rezones within the city for Planning Commission in August. And people have been generally agreeable to that. You know, if there's an emergency, we'll take it on a case-by-case basis. But it's cleaner to just pause for the month of August on rezones within the city limits. The equivalency map will come to Planning Commission in September and it will come to you in October. First, well, I guess the second week of October is when you'll get that. And, yes, sir. I knew you wouldn't let me get past the equivalency mapping.
Looks like we're voting on the equivalence, equivalency, that's hard to say, map in October.
Yes, that's the plan now.
The same month that the new zoning ordinance becomes effective.
Yes, so.
When will we, so will we be seeing, does that mean we won't be seeing new zoning requests until November?
I believe you will see some in October. When the equivalency map, the same month that the equivalency map is brought to you. You'll see the equivalency map before you'll see new zoning cases. But the vote will be in the same month.
So we can add that, we need to add the day, which Tuesday all this is going to happen to that.
My concern all along is that we have a map before we start considering.
And that's the intention, is that we would have the map before you start hearing zoning cases? Because that was a comment that you had made, yes.
Yes. And seventy-five percent of the map is still going to say RN one dash, seven point five for part of the city, six for part of the city and five for part of the city that's already predetermined based on the urban overlay or the Henderson overlay.
Legacy.
Councilman, that's exactly, you made some very strong and very valid points to make sure that map was in place so that we could say something. It has something on your mind. That's exactly what needs to happen. So I.
Well, typically, we get zoning cases the second week in a month. And that would almost mean we would need to equivalent some map in the first week. If that was going to be the case.
Implementation. So we'll be in, I'm going to call it the doldrums for how long, you think, on zoning cases?
A couple of months. Because it's going to take us that long to, you know, train our review staff in various departments on the new code. And, you know, Karen mentioned, talking to LDO.
Planning and zoning should be really light.
Is the equivalency map going to be an ordinance?
I think it would be an ordinance.
Has to be.
And then, and we will, we can schedule, we can add to here when we're coming back and talk to you about the equivalency map.
We can do a work session on that. I think that's very called for.
So we can try to schedule that sometime.
It's my understanding that we are going to include neighborhood associations in the map.
That was a strong request from council.
We will make it available to every neighborhood association. There's over a hundred in the city of Chattanooga, so we're not making a hundred visits. But, you know, everybody's got some in their district that don't meet and some that do. We'll be available to everybody who's active.
Okay. But our Neighborhood Services, if I may, has really stepped up. And I don't know if you're seeing the emails, I'm seeing.
They have, yeah.
Neighborhood is, neighborhood associations are coming online in communication. And I think we've made great strides in that, this in the last year. And I see them in District Four all the time. Welcome, new neighborhood association. So we're creating that path and strengthening that path of communication. So I think that is, I mean, that's a great conduit.
Our intention is to do an online map and then kind of a, we call them story maps. It explains why we have a new map and then to show the map. So we'll, kind of when we get past today, we'll start developing that tool also. So that's something that could be shared and we could even consider put the neighborhood boundaries on there. That might be helpful.
That's a great idea.
I just have a question, just going back into the Neighborhood Services. I know each month they have the Neighborhood Roundtables. Would it be feasible to have that map presented at those roundtables? At least those neighborhood leaders will be there.
That's an excellent idea.
Yes, we'll add that to our list, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, get on their agenda.
Let's leave no stone unturned.
Oh, Phil?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I've got the June fourth date here on our copy on here. This actually includes sections thirty-eight, one through one hundred in the version that we got here. What about the other sections up to seven seventy-one in the code? Are we going to be replacing some but not all? And I wanted to make sure about that because this isn't a complete replacement of chapter thirty-eight, correct?
It is, it is a complete replacement of chapter thirty-eight. And so we took the MUNI code formatting and applied it. So if MUNI code has different sections than we have. It is not, it will have different sections. So, but we took the MUNI code formatting. And MUNI code is not, the city's code is not absolutely standardized across all chapters and all sections of code. We took the formatting and then have applied it here. But I'm happy to talk to you. But yes, it is intended to replace chapter thirty-eight completely. But with a form-based code, it's still in this situation.
So we do have form-based code that is in a different format and then ADUs as well.
ADUs is part of it. And it's been updated to include the last change. Form-based code is referenced in here as article, there's an article number that references form-based code.
If you can give me some kind of index, just so I can, or if I can have electronic version where I can.
I will send in electronic and I will add the table of contents to it also.
Yeah, that'll help because I was trying to make sure at least we had provisions for the, I guess, the review that will be done by land development on here, enforcement provisions, which I understood you all were making changes to. And then how things were going with the Board, Board of Zoning Appeals.
Yes, and the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we coordinated on making sure that the board had flagged for us that they have it maybe to make sure that their review criteria they're using is what's in here. So I think we have got the one issue, two of the matters. We talked about irregular lot lines and those that we've addressed, I think.
Okay.
And then everything else, we haven't changed STVR. So if there's any change, we would just make them in the document.
Yes, I just need to make sure I've talked with the Department of Justice, Attorney and show them where.
Yes, I will highlight the changes related to group homes. And it's what we've talked about, but I'll highlight it and send that to you this evening or tomorrow morning.
Alright. And we'll continue to work with your office and the formatting and getting it in.
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Thank you, Phil. We want to make sure we're obviously one hundred percent compliant.
Yes, sir. Chairman, that's all we had to present today. If you'd like me to talk for another hour.
No, 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 Chris, hang on. I think we're okay. But the important thing I'd like to say wrapping up is, first of all, does anyone else on council have any comments or concerns? You have the red line, you have the date lines that we're shooting for. If not, then I want to say thank you again, literally from the bottom of my heart. You have given this your utmost attention and diligence. And that's exactly what our constituents expect from us. And you have done so by the multitude of input and changes that we have made to this document, enough to trigger it to go back to Planning Commission. And you will have another month during that process to also review it, take a look at it. We will set up a quarterly review and get those dates on the books, Dr. Burr's. And I think that's a critical and important point. Appreciate you making that point as well. And then the equivalency map, council, Chairman, that is, that's a strong point. And I hear you loud and clear. And I'm glad that you keep, you keep standing on that for us, so I appreciate that. And then to my other council colleagues, making sure that this gets out there in the neighborhoods, that people can understand this. Because one thing that we want to make sure we communicate is that this process has been one hundred percent transparent. And we have done our diligence and I believe that we have.
Is Neighborhood Services going to send it out too?
We can work with administration to make sure that they are aware of this. We have some new, we have some onboards, I think, with Neighborhood Services as well. And this is a great way for them to get their feet wet and to help promote this within our neighborhoods. So with that being said, to staff and to the administration.
Hey Darren, you've done a wonderful job. Thank you for leading this. You've done a great job.
The chairman has been a pleasure to work with.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I appreciate that. That's very, that's very kind of you. Thank you all very much for the work you have done. This is hundreds, if not thousands, of hours and now to this point, years of work. And I think it's critical that we recognize that. And this is, this is the way it should work. We should take our time. We should make sure that we address every single thing possible. And we should have a system set up to where we can review it and address things as they come along because life happens. And we're going to, there will be some things that we need to address and we have that scheduled, so. If nothing else.
Where can the public see all of this?
We will post it either today or tomorrow. We are waiting for this. But I will, when we update the website, I'll send you all an email, a little blurb, and here's the link.
Thank you.
Very good.
You can share that with neighborhoods. And it'll be on the Planning Commission agenda, so it will be available on that website.
Well, and like all of the.
Yeah, so we're going to post the updated version in the comments and stuff.
Any other comments or questions before we adjourn? This is our final per session.
Until January.
Until January.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, then we all adjourn. Thank you very much.